I'm going to run upstairs. Bye, bye, bye. Enjoy, okay. See you tomorrow. We can email the name. Okay. Hi, Caroline.
Hi, Schrader.
I know when everybody's saying, "Oh, my dear." Well, that's his sister. Oh, really? They were downtown for a few days and they were thinking about... I think we have this conversation. I got my little couple that just shows up. You know, her sister, they all... Yes, yes. So it was good to have a sister and her...
Thanks, man. Nice.
Okay, everyone. I'm going to call a meeting to order of October 20th, 2014. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, and good evening. You do not need to press your lights tonight. We took care of that ahead of time. Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Amador?
Present.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Present.
Councilman Benson?
Here.
Councilman McElhany?
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott? Councilman Douglas?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. I do want to make straight for the record that Councilwoman Elliott is not going to be with us tonight with some family issues she's taking care of. Is there a motion to allow her to be excused? Mr. Bullock?
Move to excuse Councilwoman Elliott from tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow Ms. Elliott's absence to be excused. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can Mr. Mayor, could we also think about Mick Mitchell in our prayers tonight? His family, he passed away last week, and he'll be funeralized tomorrow at Oylinger's.
Okay.
And he's the founder of Mitchell &amp; Sons, the deck store.
Yep, keep Mick Mitchell in your prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if the staff will kindly go around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Sandy Curevers?
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Jason Leslie, Finance.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
Mark Lucas, Croky Sports and Entertainment.
Again, thank you all for being here. We're going to start off, we have citizen communication, and I know nobody signed up to come up and speak, but I want to give everyone in the audience an opportunity. If they have something they want to address with the council, now's the time, please raise your hand. If not, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may seek to remove a specific item for further discussion and/or a separate vote. Tonight, there are two items listed under the Consent Agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove any of these items? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Mr. McElhany?
Mr. Mayor, would you move to approve the Consent Agenda?
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the titles?
First item is Item Ordinance Z-7069901020614, an ordinance approving the Burlington Northern Cattellus, PUD's own document, Amendment Number Four. Next item is Resolution 2014-112, a resolution appointing members to designated boards, commissions, and committees of Commerce City.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The title's been read, and I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. For the record, eight in favor, one excused. And we'll move on to our public hearing portion of the meeting. We have Resolution 2014-40 adopting the 2015 budget. I'm opening the public hearing, and I'm inviting the city manager to address the council regarding the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. It's my honor tonight to present to you staff's recommended budget for the 2015 budget year. As you know, the budget process started weeks ago. Staff begins preparing the annual budget usually in the early part of May every year. And so, this presentation of the budget is the culmination of a tremendous amount of work on behalf of staff and on behalf of city council. City council begins working on the annual budget during the month of July. We are very proud to recommend this budget to you. This is a balanced budget, and actually, for the first time since 2005, this recommended budget will reflect our projection that operating revenues will exceed operating expenditures. And we were able to do so while still meeting the goals that city council set out for us at the beginning of the budget process. The first is maintaining levels of services. We provide excellent services to the Commerce City community, and council's goal every year is to provide a fiscally responsible budget that maintains those levels of services. Secondly, we have a strong desire to properly take care of the public facilities that we already have. This budget allows us to do that. And third, this budget allows us to properly take care of employees of the City of Commerce City. We are a public service organization. The employees of this organization work very hard to provide a very high level of service, and I'm very proud that this budget allows us to continue to take care of folks in an appropriate way to ensure that we are able to provide terrific services to our community. We will be presenting some additional information on November 3rd on the slides to give a broader picture of total planned expenditures in 2015. Cheryl Carstens is here tonight to review the general fund budget and the key expenditures associated with the proposed general fund budget in 2015. So I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Brian. I want to mention that the numbers before you are the 2015 budgeted numbers. These numbers do include the 2K projected revenues from the 1% increase in sales tax. However, it does not include the expenditures. The reason for that is later on this evening, you'll be seeing an ordinance to amend the 2014 budget for the $78 million in bond proceeds that were issued this summer. Because those are in the CIP fund, those account balances carry over from year to year, which will then be amending these numbers. So what you will see at the end of 2014 is the CIP fund balance will go up significantly because we will only be decreasing those proceeds by the amount of 2014 in expenditures. Then likewise, in 2015, you will see that CIP fund balance go down for the 2015 incurred expenditures for those 2015 expenses for the 2K project. So I wanted to explain why you're not seeing those as part of the budget process. We're anticipating $64 million in general fund revenues. On the right side is the expenditures for the various departments. In the finance number of $12.4 million, that does include some of the 2K administrative costs, the program management oversight, CH2M Hill, and the communication infrastructure room. Likewise, Parks and Recreation, in addition to including the golf course, it does also include the 2K operation and maintenance expenditures for the projects that will be coming online in 2015, which include Frontier Park and the outdoor leisure pool. This next slide shows the transfers that happen within the general fund. Each year, there's a transfer to the Housing Authority of $60,000, a transfer to Elected Officials Retirement Fund of $39,000. The sales tax bond issue fund is for our existing debt service payments. You will also see a new line item, the sales tax bond issue fund, that is for the 2K debt service payments. The CIP, a transfer of $16,500, transferred to the URA Fund for the Derby Catalyst Program. And then, as Brian mentioned, this is the first time we are showing a balanced budget, and we anticipate being able to add to general fund. Even though it's a small amount, we're proud of the fact that we're no longer anticipating having to use that fund balance to meet our expenditures. And then, general fund balance for the 2K projects, we are anticipating to be $3.2 million, so total expenditures of the $64 million as well. At the end of 2014, general fund fund balance was $4.7 million. If you recall, in the 2014 budget process, we anticipated using $2.4 million of fund balance to meet those 2014 expenditures. Finance is watching that very closely and providing reports to Brian and Jim on a monthly basis. Right now, based on the numbers we're seeing, we don't anticipate having to use that $2.4, but we will continue to monitor that every month. We also have operating reserves, $5.1 million. This includes money that can be used in times of economic downturn. We also have safeguard reserves of $7.1 million, which can be used for emergencies facing the community, natural disasters, acts of terrorism, that type of thing. And then, we also have the state requirement Tabor Reserve that we have to do on an annual basis of $1.4 million, showing the total coming to $13.6 million. What's next? The council opened the public hearing, and we will ask you to continue that public hearing to November 3rd. At that time, we would anticipate the public hearing closing, and then you take action on the budget and certify the mill levy for 2015. At this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. You did a great job of laying that out. Does the council have any questions? One of them, Ms. Carson. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, the only question I have, and it was asked of me this weekend, in the budget, is it said that the rec center will be opening up on 8:00 on Sundays. And you would not believe how many people asked me this, so I'm just making... And I told them, "Yeah, next year, the rec center will be opening up 8:00 on Sundays because it's a budgeted thing."
Brian, you want to answer?
Yes, that is included in planned expenditures for 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions concerning the budget and Ms. Carstens? Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Now, the way the 2015 budget is laid out, we can also keep up with the storm drain management. Correct?
The 2015 budget does include stormwater management and maintenance efforts to make sure we're in compliance with state and federal regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? You know, I'm going to have comments on the budget itself. Right now, I'd like to limit it to questions of Ms. Carstens. Do you have a question? Comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Just obviously want to acknowledge the positive news. It's nice to see us reach a point where we do have this positive situation and positive projection. It's obviously been a long road, and a lot of work by staff, and, you know, finance in particular, to make things work each year. And, you know, as rough as we may have thought things were at any one point in time, we've consistently seen ourselves in a much better position than many of our peers. And again, just my kudos to staff for keeping such a close eye on things and putting us in a consistently strong position in spite of all those external factors.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else before I go to the audience? Does anyone in the audience would like to address the council concerning the budget this evening? Seeing no one, I'm going to open it up for the council for comments. If any of the council has any comments they want to make. Councilwoman Carson?
Brian, I just wanted to say thank you, and I wanted to thank all departments out here because I know everybody really whittled away and worked diligently to bring this balanced budget. It's very much appreciated by all. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, do you have one? Renee? Mr. Bullock?
I also want to echo that. Thank you to staff, thank you to all the departments, and thank you to finance. Without you and those magic fingers, this would not be getting done. Roger liked that back there. But thank you to everybody with the city because we are turning a big corner here in the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Douglas?
Just wanted to say thank you as well. Thank you, everybody, covered that, but just want to make sure that I acknowledge you guys are doing a very fine job for 2015 budget. Thanks.
Anyone else? So you know what? I would like to say thanks, first of all, to the residents and citizens of the community. Without their support, we wouldn't have passed the 2K initiative, which is going to increase services, Quality Community Foundation for their efforts. And then, it comes down to staff and the efforts made with the budget. And I got to watch very closely this year, and I know each department was requested to reduce their budget. And each department, as we went through, every department, this council got to see that every department shaved some money out of their budget. And it's nice to finally be back in a position where we have met the budget without having to take out of the reserves to cover the deficit in the budget. And that shows you that the economy is getting better. It shows you that we're doing a better job with less. So there's a lot of kudos that goes to the staff in all departments for the efforts made to balance this budget. And I just did an interview with a student from Metro State the other day, and he said... So, one of the questions that he had to ask me in this interview was, "What do you do with all the money that's left over at the end of the year? When you get towards the end of the year and you still have money left in the budget, do you guys just spend it quickly so that you can have the same budget the next year?" And I told him, "No, why would we do that?" He says, "Well, that seems to be what most people do with budgets." And I said, "No, every year that we've ever had excess revenues versus our expenditures, we've always put it into our reserves or put it into another project that has beneficial services to our community." And he was a little taken back, but as you can see, we don't have a lot this year left over, but at least we have a balanced budget. We didn't have to take anything out of the reserves, and it's a bonus because we have the 2K initiative, and we're watching that very closely so that we can get as much services for our community as possible. And if we can save enough money, maybe we can do another project. So, thanks go out to the citizens first, and then to the staff for the great job, and then to the rest of my council colleagues for the oversight. So, thank you. If there be no further discussion, I would like to continue the public hearing to November 3rd, 2014, on the budget. Mr. Attorney, do you need a motion to continue that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Move to continue the budget till November 3rd, 2014. Thank you.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on the budget to November 3rd, 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're going to move into the resolution portion of our meeting, and we have Resolution 2014-89. I'd like to invite Roger Tinklinberg forward to address the council on this resolution.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
This presentation actually serves as an overview for Resolution 89 and 90, as well as Ordinance 2025. And then, the same issues come up in the ECA GID meeting. Again, there'll be two resolutions and an ordinance there. So, we can talk about that in the ECA GID meeting, but anyway, this is the background information for you. So, general background is that we have the two GIDs in the E470 area. One is the residential, and one is the commercial area. And that's in addition to the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District, which is the North Range centered basically around 104th Avenue. This will be dealing with water infrastructure. There's a connection between South Adams County Water and Sanitation District and Denver Water, which is currently temporary, and so, we're addressing that condition. This deals with the financial relationships as well as presents an investment in economic development, basically. So, what we're requesting your approval is that the ECA GID be able to purchase a permanent water connection between SACWest and Denver Water, and that would be on Tower Road at approximately 72nd, 70, no, 80, somewhere in between 70th and 80th Avenue is where the connection is. So, city staff have been meeting with the Water District staff for some time, and as I mentioned earlier, we approved the two new GIDs in 2013, and both of those had successful elections in November, and that authorized both of those general improvement districts to levy taxes and also to issue debt. So, the E470 Commercial Area GID had a petitioner from DIATC, which is a DIA tech center, Chris Thompson, and that's approximately at 81st Avenue and Tower Road. And then, a few months later, we had a petition from Richard Frank for Settlers Crossing, and so, there's a portion of Settlers Crossing where the Residential Area GID was formed, and that's at approximately 96th and Tower Road. It does not include their entire development because when they come in for approval and annexation and joining the GID, a portion will join the Residential GID, and a portion will join the Commercial GID. Currently, there is very limited assessed value in each district, and so, there's no ability to bond for improvements. But, as I discussed, there's a current water connection that's considered temporary, and there were no guarantees that it would remain after 2017. So, SACWest has been negotiating for a permanent connection with Denver Water for several years. And this connection is critical for the long-term development in the area because it means looping the entire SACWest system to provide fresh water throughout the system. So, they've reached an agreement between the two parties, and this does not entail any additional water rights, just a permanent delivery point, or actually, multiple points for the 4,000 acre feet that was part of the Arsenal settlement. The total purchase would be for 3 million gallons per day, and that's capacity, so it's sort of like a tap, basically, a water tap. And that costs $3.9 million. 2.7 of that is delivered at this location at 81st Avenue and Tower Road, and another .3 million gallons delivered, or capacity, delivered at 114th and Piccadilly Road. South Adams County Water and Sanitation District has committed $2.6 million for the purchase, and they did that to basically, as they quote, "armor" the existing system. And the ECA GID is proposing the purchase of the additional $1 million at a cost of $1.3 million. So, this is a map of that general area. You can see east-west, there's a dotted blue line, and that's the proposed water main that will come from the west to the east, coming to a reservoir facility here, and then a distribution pipe back over. And basically, what we're doing is we're making, excuse me, making permanent this connection down here, which removes the immediate need for this basically $30 million solution. That will still have to be done sometime in the future, but with this purchase, that's many years in the future, hopefully. So, the financial relationship is that we're adding to some existing financial relationships that exist between the city, the Northern Infrastructure GID, and the E470 Commercial Area GID related to infrastructure. All four entities of the Residential, Commercial, and the Northern Infrastructure GID agreed with the city to a split of the cost for Tower Road, and so, the city is proceeding with that expansion and has a $58 million budget. And of that, based on traffic analysis done by FHU, the Northern Infrastructure GID will contribute $2.5 million. The NIG will contribute, I'm sorry, back up. The NIG obligation was reduced by the $2.5 million that was transferred to the ECA GID, and as a result, the ECA GID accounts payable, if you will, was increased by the same amount. And that was for an earlier loan that the ECA GID made to the DIATC Metro District in order for that public improvements to go in. Staff is recommending that the city authorize the $1.3 million loan from the CIPP fund balance to the ECA GID. And this is a round number. It's actually dialed in a little closer in the resolution. You'll notice in the resolution, it talked about $1.2 million and $40,000. So, this will be an additional AP to the city that would be an obligation of the ECA GID. And the idea is that the return on investment is that we'll see increased investment by private development, which would then spur the assessed value opportunities and also increase the tax revenues to the ECA GID. As I mentioned earlier, SACWest is willing to buy 2 million gallons, and that's to armor their existing system. Long-term, it's going to require an additional $1 million gallons per day, and that's why the ECA GID is proposed to step up for that purchase, and that would reduce, or actually delay, the need for the $30 million in...
One of the questions that he had to ask me in this interview was, what do you do with all the money that's left over at the end of the year? When you get towards the end of the year and you still have money left in the budget, do you guys just spend it quickly so that you can have the same budget the next year? And I told him, no, why would we do that? He says, well, that seems to be what most people do with budgets. And I said, no, every year that we've ever had an excess revenues versus our expenditures, we've always put it into our reserves or put it into another project that has beneficial services to our community. And he was a little taken back, but as you can see, we don't have a lot this year left over, but at least we have a balanced budget. We didn't have to take anything out of the reserves. And it's a bonus because we have the 2K initiative and we're watching that very closely so that we can get as much services for our community as possible. And if we can save enough money, maybe we can do another project. So thanks go out to the citizens first and then to the staff for the great job and then to the rest of my council colleagues for the oversight. So, thank you. If there be no further discussion, I would like to continue the public hearing to November 3rd, 2014 on the budget. Mr. Attorney, do you need a motion to continue that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Move to continue the budget till November 3rd, 2014.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonny?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on the budget to November 3rd, 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're going to move into the resolution portion of our meeting. And we have Resolution 2014-89. I'd like to invite Roger Tinklinberg forward to address the council on this resolution.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
This presentation actually serves as an overview for Resolution 89 and 90, as well as Ordinance 2025. And then the same issues come up in the ECA GID meeting. Again, there'll be two resolutions and an ordinance there. So we can talk about that in the ECA GID meeting, but anyway, this is the background information for you. So, general background is that we have the two GIDs in the E470 area. One is the residential and one is the commercial area. And that's in addition to the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District, which is the North Range centered basically around 104th Avenue. This will be dealing with water infrastructure. There's a connection between South Adams County Water and Sanitation District and Denver Water, which is currently temporary. And so, we're addressing that condition. This deals with the financial relationships as well as presents an investment in economic development, basically. So what we're requesting your approval is that the ECA GID be able to purchase a permanent water connection between SACWest and Denver Water. And that would be on Tower Road at approximately 72nd, 70, no, 80th, somewhere in between 70th and 80th Avenue is where the connection is. So, city staff have been meeting with the water district staff for some time. And as I mentioned earlier, we approved the two new GIDs in 2013. And both of those had successful elections in November. And that authorized both of those general improvement districts to levy taxes and also to issue debt. So the E470 Commercial Area GID had a petitioner from DIATC, which is a DIA Tech Center, Chris Thompson. And that's approximately at 81st Avenue and Tower Road. And then a few months later, we had a petition from Richard Frank for Settlers Crossing. And so there's a portion of Settlers Crossing where the residential area GID was formed. And that's at approximately 96th and Tower Road. It does not include their entire development because when they come in for approval and annexation and joining the GID, a portion will join the residential GID and a portion will join the commercial GID. Currently, there is very limited assessed value in each district, and so there's no ability to bond for improvements. But as I discussed, there's a current water connection that's considered temporary. And there were no guarantees that it would remain after 2017. So SACWest has been negotiating for a permanent connection with Denver Water for several years. And this connection is critical for the long-term development in the area because it means looping the entire SACWest system to provide fresh water throughout the system. So they've reached an agreement between the two parties. And this does not entail any additional water rights, just a permanent delivery point, or actually multiple points, for the 4,000 acre feet that was part of the Arsenal settlement. The total purchase would be for 3 million gallons per day, and that's capacity. So it's sort of like a tap, basically, a water tap. And that costs $3.9 million. 2.7 of that is delivered at this location at 81st Avenue and Tower Road, and another .3 million gallons delivered, or capacity, delivered at 114th and Piccadilly Road. South Adams County Water and Sanitation District has committed 2.6 million for the purchase. And they did that to basically, as they quote, call it, "armor" the existing system. And the ECA GID is proposing the purchase of the additional 1 million at a cost of 1.3 million. So this is a map of that general area. You can see east-west, there's a dotted blue line. And that's the proposed water main that will come from the west to the east, coming to a reservoir facility here, and then a distribution pipe back over. And basically, what we're doing is we're making, excuse me, making permanent this connection down here, which removes the immediate need for this basically $30 million solution. That will still have to be done sometime in the future, but with this purchase, that's many years in the future, hopefully. So the financial relationship is that we're adding to some existing financial relationships that exist between the city, the Northern Infrastructure GID, and the E470 Commercial Area GID related to infrastructure. All four entities of the residential, commercial, and the Northern Infrastructure GID agreed with the city to a split of the cost for Tower Road. And so, the city is proceeding with that expansion and has a $58 million budget. And of that, based on traffic analysis done by FHU, the Northern Infrastructure GID will contribute 2.5 million. The NIG will contribute, I'm sorry, backup. The NIG obligation was reduced by the 2.5 million that was transferred to the ECA GID. And as a result, the ECA GID accounts payable, if you will, was increased by the same amount. And that was for an earlier loan that the ECA GID made to the DIATC Metro District in order for that public improvements to go in. Staff is recommending that the city authorize the 1.3 million dollar loan from the CIPP fund balance to the ECA GID. And this is a round number. It's actually dialed in a little closer in the resolution. You'll notice in the resolution, it talked about 1.2 million and 40,000. So this will be an additional AP to the city that would be an obligation of the ECA GID. And the idea is that the return on investment is that we'll see increased investment by private development, which would then spur the assessed value opportunities and also increase the tax revenues to the ECA GID. As I mentioned earlier, SACWest is willing to buy 2 million gallons, and that's to armor their existing system. Long-term, it's going to require an additional 1 million gallons per day. And that's why the ECA GID is proposed to step up for that purchase. And that would reduce, or actually delay, the need for the $30 million investment in the west water main, east-west water main and storage facility. Are there any questions regarding that? I ran through it really fast, but...
Does the council have any questions regarding the resolution? Mr. McAdonny?
That's from previously.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
They have to make a motion.
Okay, let me finish with comments first. Anyone else on council have any questions of Roger? Mr. Douglas?
I'm sorry, could you explain the payment, how this will be paid back to the city from this district?
Yeah, the ECA GID, as I mentioned, it has no current assessed value. There are a few improvements that, one that's completed and others that are in early stages. So we will be seeing some use tax, I'm sorry, some property tax revenue coming into the ECA GID. As those revenues come in, then that would be the source of revenue to repay the city. So given the unknown timing in terms of some of those improvements, the way we structured the loan is that, you know, they will pay, the ECA GID will pay as revenues become available.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this resolution? Mr. Sternan? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Can you? Guillermo Sternan, 14122, East 100 and 2nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado, 8022. Just one question. Is there, in this agreement, is there any possibility in the future that Denver would ask for this area to be, become Denver instead of staying in Commerce City? Any possibility whatsoever?
Nope. And I'll explain it to you real quick, Guillermo. This was going to be part of my comments, anyway. Right now, South Adams doesn't have a temporary water connection with, they only have temporary water connection with Denver. The need for a permanent water connection is important to help loop the system, but also to give us the opportunity to create development closer to Pinia Boulevard and work its way north from an economic development standpoint. What happened is, South Adams was given the opportunity for a permanent connection with 3 million gallons a day capacity. They chose only to purchase 2 million gallons a day of that capacity. And I was reluctant to leave a million gallons of capacity on the table when we're going to need it. And so for the long-term future of our community for economic development along that corridor, it was important for this city to step up and buy that other 1 million gallons of capacity. I also have asked the council and the staff that we maintain ownership of that 1 million gallons of capacity so that we can use it as we see fit. Now, when it comes to South Adams, they have made it clear that they're going to be using their 2 million gallons of capacity on a first-come, first-served basis. I think that it gives us an opportunity to utilize that other million gallons of capacity as we have users that will help benefit from economic development to our community. So I think we can take a little bit different look at it. My personal opinion is, I wish that the South Adams would have purchased the entire 3 million gallons of capacity as to that is their realm, taking care of the water and sewer needs of this community. And it's unfortunate that we have to step up and buy this other 1 million gallons of capacity. But this is an opportunity that will not present itself again. And we need to take advantage of it while we have the opportunity with Denver. But no, none of that property will, none of the Commerce City growth boundary property will be annexed to Denver ever.
Okay, because the agreements on the airport was that Denver would never have the opportunity to get into Adams County or its surrounding city because of the annexations that they are always looking for.
Well, they annexed the property that the airport sits on. The IGA is specific to the airport property itself. And they could not annex the parts of Commerce City without going to a vote of the people. So, no, they will not be annexing our area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the council on this resolution? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution 2014-89.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonny?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution approving loan agreement among the City of Commerce City and Commerce City E470 Commercial Area General Improvement District regarding mutually beneficial infrastructure improvements."
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item is Resolution 2014-90. Is there anyone on council with questions regarding this resolution? I have McAdonny and Bullock still lit up? No?
It's about to make a motion.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this resolution? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAdonny?
Move to approve Resolution 2014-90.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title, the resolution reads, "Resolution approving intergovernmental agreement among the City of Commerce City and the Commerce City E470 Commercial General Improvement District regarding mutually beneficial infrastructure improvements."
Thank you. A motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item is Resolution 2014-102. I'd like to invite Mr. Lucas to come up to address the council regarding this resolution. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. Thank you for letting me speak tonight for just a few minutes. It's important to the Cronkite organization that we were present here tonight for what we see as a formal acquisition and a symbolic event for our partnership and a new partnership in many ways. The city staff has been fabulous to work with, the council, over the past several months as we've worked out details. And while I had the opportunity, I also want to say that we're very excited about Michelle Claymore and her economic development role as we continue to strengthen relationships within the partnership. It is a milestone occurrence, certainly from, I think, our partnership's perspective. And it represents what we see as opportune timing to proceed with the development in a meaningful way. Clearly, with the significant investment that we've made with the infrastructure and stadium, to date, we would have loved to have proceeded with development before today. But with the Great Recession and slowing down the development in the immediate area, we could not be more excited about what's transpired immediately to the south of 56th and how that is really serving as a catalyst for one of the four key groups that we're targeting. Those groups, again, being hotel, retail, office, and sport. And with retail being the tip of the spear, really, and the major component, those retailers we're actively just, have been working with for years, in some instances, and are active, there's several that are active commitments, needed to see those rooftops right across 56th Avenue for them to really, that's the way their mindset works, and that's what's happening today. So, again, as you know, much time has been spent, much dollars have been invested in 2014 specifically to get ready for this. And our focus is immediately along 56th Avenue and immediately along Quebec and 56th Avenue on the corner. We're going to take advantage of that momentum that's being generated across the street. And this acquisition of the land, the formal acquisition, is something that we're, we think is ideal timing to do just that. So, again, we thank you for your commitment and are very excited to move forward in a meaningful way in the coming six to 24 months to see some things happen here.
Great. Thank you for being here. I'm going to open it up to the council if they have any questions or comments for you. Mr. Bullock?
No questions. I was here for a motion.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. This is, these are questions really from Mr. Gaylor. We're talking about provisions of the master development agreement, right? The 2006? Okay.
And we're talking about an amendment to that agreement tonight, yes. Because we've increased the acreage from that agreement that is being sold. And correspondingly, the sale price will be increased at the same rate that was agreed to in that original agreement. And that's all provided for in the closing documents.
Well, that was my next question. That $16,000 an acre, as I understand it, I mean, I'm not an appraiser, but that's less than fair market value right now, is it not? How much less is that than market value?
Well, you'd have to answer that in the context of the entire project. Now, the entire project, if you talk about strictly land value, it's probably less. But anticipating the development that'll take place on the land, the benefit to the city is greatly exceeded than if you just tried to sell it for a flat value per acre vacant land to individual developers.
Have we ever done an appraisal on that land?
Yes, there was an appraisal on that, but that's been years ago when the agreement was first entered into. I don't know that we've done a current appraisal. Can you help me on that?
The appraised value is, say, eight years ago, was it $16,000 an acre?
Yes.
Our estimate of the current appraised value, although we've not had the land appraised, certainly significantly higher than $16,000 per acre.
Well, I guess that's one question I have. We're, they're obligated to buy and we're obligated to sell a certain number of acres, but it looks like they're buying, what, about another 40 acres? 30 or 40 acres?
They're buying it all.
Why are they getting that discounted rate? They should be charged fair market value for anything over and above that. I mean, there's no reason to give away our money, give away our property.
Well, again, the context of the whole agreement envisions that development will take place in the immediate future because the buyer of this site is already obligated to buy something in the neighborhood of 220-some acres.
So we're supposed to sell them this extra property at far below fair market value based on some vague proposition that they're going to develop this area that they've had eight years to develop and have done nothing?
Now, the sale price is over $4 million, so, for the entire project. So they would have $4 million tied up.
How can you say we're going to take less and we're going to count on the property being developed when, as we have seen over the last eight years, there has been no development whatsoever? Because I don't, I don't think there's going to be any development on that property. I don't know if anybody else on the council believes that there is. If they do, I'd like to hear that you do, and I'd like to hear why you think that there's going to be some development.
If I might be able to add an important clarification, while Mr. Gaylor is reviewing specific terms of the original agreement, my understanding of the original agreement is that the Cronkite organization is obligated to buy at least 200 acres, but has the right to purchase all of the developable land above 200 acres at any time they would like to do that. They are simply exercising their right to purchase all of the remaining developable land, which has now been estimated to be 275 acres. That right was provided to them.
Is that in the master development agreement that is in existence?
That right was provided to them back in 2006.
And exactly what does that say, Mr. Gaylor? Do you have the exact wording of that provision?
I don't have the exact wording, but I've been working on this closing for some time, so I'm quite familiar with the terms. And it specifically obligates the city for any city-owned property, city-owned property, to give an option, first option, to KSE to purchase that property prior to a sale to any other party.
And the $16,000, you're saying that the master development agreement provides that there's a $16,000 per acre figure?
Yes.
Can't be increased to fair market value for anything over 220 acres, something like that?
On this, on this particular site, no.
So you're saying we're obligated to sell them essentially all the land that they want, that we own, at $16,000 an acre?
On this site.
We're obligated under the master development agreement to do that?
On this site.
On this site? Well, I noticed that water rights, mineral rights, and other pertinent rights are included. Is that in the master development agreement? Those will all be included in there?
Yes.
Is there any restriction on their ability to develop the mineral rights? Like, what if they wanted to go out and lease it to Texaco or somebody, and they decided to put up a well or, how would you restrict that?
Well, subject to our land development code and the oil and gas restrictions that you, as a council, imposed, we were on the cutting edge of that entire project. And if you recall, we have those regulations in place now.
But they would be able to do it subject to the regulations?
That is true.
But we're obligated to sell them the mineral rights and the water rights that come with that property? We're obligated to do that under the master development agreement?
That's true.
Is that what you're saying?
That's true.
Okay. I just have one more. What about the access easement? Was that provided in the master development agreement that we had to give them an access easement?
Okay, that access easement has to do with the requirement of the title company. There's a little strip of land between the public right-of-way and the site that Cronkite or KSE is purchasing. And without the access agreement, the property had no access to a public right-of-way along Quebec. And that access agreement is necessary. It's about a, I think it's about a five, 10-foot strip.
Is that access agreement, is that required by law?
Yes, under our...
But it wasn't, you're saying it wasn't provided for in the development agreement, but under the law of real property as it exists, you're saying that we're required to give them an access easement? Aren't we allowed to charge for that?
It's under our land development code that no development could take place on the property unless it had access to a public right-of-way.
But isn't the land owner allowed to charge for that easement?
Well, in a, just in a generic sense, if you're selling a piece of real estate and your title work requires access to a public right-of-way, as you well know...
I understand.
Then the seller of the property, if they want the transaction to take place, you can't get title insurance without having public access. And that public access is a requirement of the closing. And that's what that access easement is.
Right. But we're not getting paid anything for that, are we?
It's part of the transaction. It's all part of it.
You're saying it was a title commitment, a title company requirement?
That's true.
I understand, I understand what that is, but if there's nothing in that master development agreement that says we're required to give them that, but the title company is requiring it, I think that increases the price for the value of that access easement.
Said another way, the master agreement required us to convey clear title to the property. And we can't convey good title to the property if we can't provide access to the property. So the title insurance company would not insure the transaction without that access easement.
Because, you know, it seems that we're not the ones wanting to sell this property, that Cronkite Sports Enterprises is the company that wants to buy it. We don't necessarily want to sell it at far below its fair market value. And I'm just trying to, I don't know, I don't like this deal. I'm going to vote against it, but it's all right.
Anyone else on council have any questions? Well, Mr. Lucas, well, he's here. Mr. Douglas?
I have a question.
I have a question for Bob. Based on the sale, Cronky has the rights, once they purchase this, they can turn around and sell it. Is that correct?
Did you want to ask?
Yes, I'm not aware of any restriction against future sale. Once KSE acquires title of the property, I'll ask Bob to correct me if that's not correct.
City managers. City managers, correct in that regard. As far as the city is concerned, we're looking for development on the site, and if there is a developer that comes in that purchases a piece of it from Cronky, we don't have any objection to that as long as the development takes place in accord with our land development code.
All right. And, you know, I thought that the percentage of land that was available to them, first was 200, then if they want additional, it was 240, now I hear 276 acres.
That's the entire site.
The entire site, okay. Do we have a map to show those areas being purchased? It's in our pack, but just so that we could see it on the screen. Yeah.
While the discussion continues, we'll attempt to pull that map up.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments for Mr. Lucas while I have him at the podium? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you.
Yeah. Page 26, page 26.
Oh, there's one area too. There's a bunch of different, it shows the different sites that they're purchasing.
Jim, it follows the legal description, doesn't it?
While Mr. Kramer is searching for that document, my understanding is that the remaining land that could be purchased was approximately 260 acres. When KSE was preparing for the required purchase of at least 200 acres, they performed an updated survey of the property, which more accurately described remaining city property, that they had the right to purchase, which is how it went from 260 to 275 acres.
So just to clarify, because this is a survey document, so it's a little difficult to read. The properties in question here are this parcel two, the north campus, north of the Klein Treatment Facility, this parcel adjacent to Quebec, north of 60th and south of Prairie Parkway, the land in between the Bulk Mail Facility, up to 60th and over, the two parcels that right now serve as, you know, sort of that field in between the stadium and the civic center, and then the development parcels to the south and to the west of the playing fields. So the original number that had been talked about before was simply an estimate, and it wasn't until an actual new survey that a purchased land was done that the exact number was actually known. We never quite knew, was it going to be 210, 250, 260, until the surveys?
And Mr. Gaylor's just pulled up the number from the closing documents. It appears to be 269 acres is the official amount that would be part of this real estate closing.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from council concerning the resolution? Mr. McAdonie? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on, or to the council concerning this resolution? Please come forward. Good evening. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Sandy Carruthers, 6951 Kearney Street, Commerce City, Colorado. I didn't come prepared to speak, and I'm not very knowledgeable totally on the specifics of this subject. I got a couple of questions, and I may make a couple of comments, but I am going to make a general comment. I guess there's a master development plan that was developed in 2006 for the Victory Crossing property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that being extended at this point in time?
No, it's, the original agreement is still in place. There are no changes being made to the original agreement.
Okay, and KSE is now, this resolution pertains to purchasing specifically additional property other than that they've already purchased from the city?
No, ma'am. This, this resolution is finalizing a piece of the original agreement that in October of 2014, they're required to purchase a minimum of 200 acres of the site. There was an additional after the survey of the 61, whatever, 69 acres, and they have the first right of refusal by the original agreement to purchase the 69 acres as well. So the purchase will be 269 acres, 200 of which they were obligated to purchase, the other 69 which they have the first right of refusal to purchase.
Okay, is there additional property, or acreage there on that property available for the city to develop?
Mr. McBroom, I know we still have some for our campus. What is left that we have for development?
If we can pull that drawing back up, perhaps Mr. Kramer can walk through the land that is not subject to KSE's right of first refusal. There is land that the city intends to own forever and is not available to KSE to purchase.
But they're basically purchasing all available acreages to be developed?
That's correct. The civic center is not a part of this purchase where we sit today. The gateway portion, the open space where the detention and the trails are, is not a part of this. The stadium and ball fields are actually not a part of this. The high school, some of the drainage areas up there, and the Klein Water Treatment Plant, none of those are a part of this purchase.
If this is approved, is there any additional land that KSE is going to have first option to develop before the city?
Well, first of all, the city's not in the development business. Secondly, the way that the original agreement reads is that Cronky Sports has the first right of refusal on any city-owned property. So if the city owned the dog track, which we do not, the Urban Renewal Authority owns the dog track, but when that purchase was going through, Cronky Sports would have had the opportunity to come in and buy that as a first right of refusal, if it was city-owned, okay? But the city doesn't buy property for development. That's a private sector business. So as far as I know, we have no other properties that are for development, and the Urban Renewal Authority has the dog track property. So, Mr. McBroom, you may elaborate on that, but that's to my knowledge where we're at.
Another way to answer your question is, the amendments being contemplated tonight do not expand KSE's rights to buy any additional city property.
Okay, that's what I was basically asking for, because as a citizen, I have been very, very disappointed that that property has not been developed in the last eight years. Yeah, it's great to hear, that it's exciting that right across south of 56, which is Denver property, is going to be incentive now for KSE to develop the property, which ultimately will benefit us. It needs to be developed. But that property went through the same great recession that the men used to define this, same great recession was in place when Northfield was developed, when Stapleton was developed, and yes, some of the businesses went under during that period of time, but now that the economy is improving, they're growing and they're already existing. And this whole thing has been an enigma to me, a mystery, and I guess I learned a lot tonight, and I certainly hope that positive development is going to occur in the relatively near future on the Victory Crossing property that will benefit directly the city of Commerce City and the citizens and the residents that live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Just state your name and address for the record again, Guillermo?
Guillermo Serna, 14122, East 100 and Second Place, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. Everything that she expressed, plus our children, and what is put before them with all this traffic that comes into the stadium and all the development that's coming in. Businesses wanting our children to be competitive as they grow and to learn sportmanship, but yet our children without a big organization that, say, cannot utilize what's at the stadium. When this came through, it was promised to our community that there would be a compassion for our children, and I'm talking all of Commerce City, to utilize one or two of those fields. And it seems like the more we ask, the more the price goes up when we do want to utilize them. But traffic comes through our city, we provide fire department, police department, but locally, I know that they give a lot to the Denver metro area, but locally, their home base, our children can't participate. I don't see any free senior days at the stadium, but yet they're going to benefit from it. The businesses that they're bringing in are going to benefit from it, but our community, really at this point, I haven't seen anything that says, yes, we do contribute back to the community. Now, you may have the figures, or maybe the city manager has figures, but the community doesn't. All they know is they can't raise enough funds from their children, let's say in a soccer field, but they can see everybody else come in, worldwide, other sports other than soccer, come in and utilize those fields. People with money. We went through the same thing as far as depression and all that type of stuff. All I'm asking is for them to have a little bit of conscience and maybe raise the price a little bit so that our children can utilize those fields and the city can pay for those fields. It's a lot of take, 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 but no giving back. There's got to be a conscience there somewhere. Businesses want better education and all that, but yet we're struggling to pass bonds for our city, for the businesses or the homes that we need. So don't let that opportunity go. You let it go once, maybe work something out. Doesn't take much imagination to give back to our children so that they can enjoy that opportunity. At the beginning, we talked about having the kids, maybe one time in 10 years, being able to receive trophies there along with some of their soccer players and all that type of stuff. The only time I see them around the city is when we have them at Community Enterprise, sometimes, not all the time. They're everywhere else, but not, they don't give back to our city. And we want them to succeed, but by God, have a little bit of conscience for our children. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has anything they'd like to come forward and talk to the council about this resolution? Seeing none, I'm going to go, I have a lot of names. I got you, Jim. I have a lot of lights lit up here for comments. Comments, Mr. McAdonie? No? Okay, Mr. Benson, comments?
Yes, another question for Bob. I know this is a temporary easement. At what point and under what circumstances does that become permanent, if ever? Well, I guess Mr. McBroom can answer it also.
My understanding, and I'll ask Bob or Jim to correct me, my recollection, Jim's recollection, is that the easement provided for in these closing documents is for future right-of-way dedication. It reserves the land as an easement at this point in time. At such time as the road needs to be widened, Cronky would be required to dedicate that land to the city for right-of-way purposes. So the easement essentially reserves that land for future right-of-way.
And that would occur once the property was going to be developed? Is that right?
I'm getting some cues from Mr. Kramer here as well. The property in question is actually, we're going to retain ownership, and then when we, I forget what you just said, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So originally, we, staff was really the one who requested that we not sell a strip along Quebec and Highway 2 for the purposes of future expansion of the roadway, as opposed to trying to renegotiate, getting possession of the property back at some future date when we had, in fact, actually owned it at one point and could make those future negotiations not need to happen at all. The idea was to keep ownership of that strip so that we have the ability to do that future roadway expansion. And then, as Mr. Gaylor pointed out, that presented challenges for the Cronky Title Company, who felt that having a strip of non-access along the entire bit was not something they could ensure. So their title company requested an easement for us, from us, so that KSE had access to right-of-way. So it really is a result of a request that we initiated, which was to maintain ownership of the strip.
Well, we'd have to have ownership if we were going to grant an easement. I get that, but.
To pick up on what was said, is that when development takes place, or we need to widen that street, then it'll become dedicated as a, as part of the right-of-way?
That's absolutely correct. So then the easement will go away because it will be, in fact, actually right-of-way. That's right.
But why is it called a temporary easement? Because it seems like it's, from what I've heard, it's temporary until development occurs, and then it's going to become some sort of a permanent easement. And my only suggestion would be to...
Then it'll become dedicated right-of-way.
Right, okay, but that's a permanent easement.
Well, or probably a deed at that time.
Right. But shouldn't we put some time limitation on how long it's going to be a temporary easement, like one year? You know, they start development within a year, and we have to dedicate the right-of-way? Wouldn't that be a reasonable way to do it? But give them a certain time period to start the development, to turn this into a dedicated right-of-way, otherwise they don't have any right-of-way or easement over it. I just want to do something to light a fire under these people, to do something.
Understood. The challenge here is that the dedication isn't up to Cronky. The city is owning, is maintaining ownership of this strip. So the only timeline that would be causing that strip to change to right-of-way is when the city decided to enlarge the roadway or put in public facilities of some kind. So if the development occurs on the Cronky side of things, that won't necessitate automatically the roadway to be widened in that stretch. And then at that, if they do need to get specific access on Quebec or Highway 2, they are still obligated to go through the city's access permit process so that it gets approved at certain stages. But the Cronky development itself is not what's going to instigate the development, the quote-unquote development, or the building of the roadway. the quote-unquote "development," or the building of the roadway, expanding of the roadway. It's really going to be the city's decision to expand that roadway.
Why is it called a temporary easement?
Because it's, it's going to go away whenever the roadway gets expanded.
It might be some other word that might more accurately describe it. It's not a permanent easement, but-
Let's start with this. The city owns the site, and we're giving Cronky that temporary easement across the site that we own until we want to widen the street, and then we're going to convert our, because we own it, we're going to convert it then from an easement to a deed for the right-of-way. So it's all within the city's control as to whether or not that remains an easement or whether or not that becomes a deed, because remember, we own it, we the city. And now whether you struggle with the terminology temporarism, we call it temporarism because it's not a permanent easement, because it'll become a right-of-way when it becomes a deed to that property.
Is that explained in the purchase agreement? What specifically is going to happen, the way that, Mr.?
It's explained in the easement document that it's an access easement.
Exhibit B? Or, wait a minute.
We've labeled it. I don't see the exhibit here, but that's it.
Access easement attached to the amendment is Exhibit B1. This is, everything that you've explained to me is in Exhibit B1. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, the access easement's in Exhibit B1.
But it says what you and Mr. Kramer have outlined.
Well, we the city have control over the situation, so we don't have to have Cronky agree to anything on that access easement. When we want to convert it, we'll convert it. We don't need his permission. We can deed it to ourselves at that time.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Mr. McAdonie?
Just to, just to put this in plain English, we've used a lot of fancy terms about states of ownership and control. We're talking about the fact that on land that we will continue to own following this transaction, the ability exists in the form of an easement for Cronky to cut a driveway from an existing roadway into the piece of land that he's purchasing. And at some point down the road, when that roadway gets wider, right, to the point you made about a deed, right, converting it from a, an easement to an actual deeded piece of public right-of-way road, well, the driveway would necessarily scoot back to the new width of that roadway. Is that essentially what we're talking about here?
That's a good explanation, right.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAdonie?
Move to approve Resolution 2014-102.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I've held my comments to this point in time. I agree with both of our residents that got up and spoke. I also agree with our obligation to meet the terms of the agreement that's put before us, that we agreed to back in 2006. When it comes to development, with Mr. Lucas in the audience, I will tell you, we're, we are very much interested in having this site developed. We want it developed properly. We want those services to be here for our residents that deserve those services. We purchased the 917 acres for a reason, for a benefit to our community. I would also like our staff to get with Mr. Serna on what is provided within the contract for city uses concerning the stadium, because I know there are some provisions in there, Mr. Serna, and you need to bear aware what those, those services are that were offered. I do think with the economic opportunities what's going on toward the south of us, that it's, it's a great time. I do know, after having discussions with Mr. Lucas, that they do have a lot of, a lot of interest right now. It is, it is this council's desire to see this site developed, and developed in a means that, that gives beneficial use to our community through tax dollars and services that will be generated off of this site, as well as any site within our city that has the opportunity for development, including properties up north, properties, Highway 85 and 104th, there are many, many vacant properties we would love to see developed to provide additional commercial, retail opportunities and services for our residents. But from a development standpoint, we can't make anybody that owns land develop before they're ready for it to develop. All we can do is encourage, and I'm encouraging Mr. Lucas to get something going on the property. We, we did this for a reason so that we would have those services and those developments take place, so that we could have opportunities for retail, commercial, restaurants, and all of those type of things, the same as we encouraged development up along the 104th corridor. We're finally starting to see some commercial activity take place there. It's frustrating because you want to see it happen immediately, and I know it doesn't always work that way, but we're, we're supportive of the development, we want it to take place, and our economic development team is working well with Mr. Lucas to make that happen. Tonight, all that is being asked is that we honor our agreement that was put forth in 2006 to allow the purchase of this property to take place. And hopefully, for 4.2 million or whatever, it's in the 4 million range of more investment into land, will help encourage them to find users and to develop as well. So having said that, is there any other discussion from any council members? I do have a motion and a second on the floor. I will be supporting the motion. Seeing no other discussion, Mr. Gaylor, please read the title.
Title reads, Resolution, the City Council of the City of Commerce City regarding sale of real property located in Victory Crossing.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let the record show, there are seven ayes, one nay, one excused absence. Next item on the agenda, ordinance is on first reading. We have Ordinance 2025. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing no one? Anyone in the audience have any questions that they'd like to pose to the council regarding this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce Ordinance 2025 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonie?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. The city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, An Ordinance Amending the 2014 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by transferring a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the CIPP fund in the amount of $1,240,000, and loan to the E470 Commercial Area General Improvement District and the authorization of the expenditures thereof.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. Ask for a roll call vote on Ordinance 2025. Let the record show, eight in favor, one excused absence. Next, we'll go on to Ordinance 2034. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAdonie?
Thank you. I would move to introduce Ordinance 2034. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, An Ordinance Amending the 2014 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the Community Justice Fund Balance in the General Fund in the amount of $35,000 for conducting a property and evidence needs assessment study in the Police Department and the authorization of the expenditures thereof.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. Ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, eight in favor, one excused absence. Next item, Ordinance 2035. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce Ordinance 2035 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, An Ordinance Amending the 2014 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the sales and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2014, in the amount of $78 million for the construction, installation, operation, and maintenance of parks, recreation, and roadway improvements, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. Ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, there are eight in favor, one excused absence. Now we'll move into the administrative council portion of our meeting. I'll ask the city manager, McBroom, to lead a discussion about meeting dates around the holiday seasons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you likely already know, there are two study sessions in December that are on the current city council meeting schedule, December 8th and December 22nd. Staff has been working to keep the December 8th agenda open because there is an event planned for that evening. That is the evening event where the city council would officially turn on the holiday lights here around the civic center. It's, the event is a bit different than previous year's events as opposed to the hometown holiday event. It's a holiday lighting event and a meet and greet with seniors in the community. The city council has the option of either still conducting a study session that night or not having the study session that night. Again, staff's been working to try to keep that agenda open so that you don't need to have a meeting that night, but essentially, that's a decision of the city council to make. Similarly, the night of December 22nd, there is no event, however, it's the week of Christmas, and so we can either fill that time up on that agenda for study session items or manage that work schedule on your behalf so that there's not a need to have a meeting that evening, but we wanted to bring both options to you early enough so that we can continue to effectively manage that work schedule for you.
Okay. Questions concerning Mr. McBroom's two dates in December? What are the desires of the council? Anybody want to chime in on what your desires are?
I have a chime.
Okay, chime. Mr. Bullock?
I would suggest that, just my chiming in, that we cancel both those study sessions, unless there's something that is absolutely pertinent that we would need to discuss, but the one on the 22nd, I would definitely say today, if we can, if we definitely have information that we need to discuss, I would rather have it done on the 22nd than have the lighting ceremony and us going back and forth between the lighting ceremony and a study session. So if I had my preference, I would rather cancel the one of the 8th and keep the one of the 22nd if we have so much information that we definitely need to have a study session, but that's just my preference. I would let the rest of the council explain their preference.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, along with those dates, what about that 5th Monday and 29th? I mean, that wasn't discussed. I know, you know, typically, so far, we've been using those, so.
That's a, that's a great question. Council did, earlier in the year, make a decision to utilize those 5th Mondays, and there is one on December 29th, so I guess the same question would apply to that December 29th date. We certainly can work well ahead of the schedule and try to avoid the need to have critical items on those nights. It's not the simplest thing to do, to miss two study sessions and that extra study session, but we think we can manage the schedule effectively. If some critical issue comes up and you've decided early on to cancel some or all of those, we can always come back to you and ask that you put it back on the schedule.
I have a suggestion for the council. I, I would prefer that, as of right now, we would cancel the one on the 8th, the one on the 22nd, but leave the one on the 28th available, the 29th available if needed, that the staff could utilize that if we have an issue come up where we need to utilize that. But that could be at the discretion of the city management if there's a need to utilize that, that study session on the 29th, but otherwise, I'd cancel the other two and leave that one open for anything that may, may come up between now and then that we need to be advised on on the 29th. Does council have any, anyone else have any comments of what they'd like to do with us? Councilwoman Carson?
Do we have to actually cancel them right now, or can we put them on hold with the ability to cancel as it gets closer so that, we're saying if nothing comes up, we will cancel, but if they're, if they're canceled, then if something would come up, we can't do anything about it, correct?
No. I could call a special meeting.
You could call a special meeting. I'm just trying to think of all the elements in here. If it wasn't for the holiday reception, it would make more sense to me to keep the 8th, but because of that, and then typically, in the past, we were not meeting on the 5th Monday, that's right in between that Christmas and, and New Year's. How long is the holiday reception? What is that, what is the timeline that is slated for?
It's planned for 90 minutes.
An hour and a half is all?
Yes.
And, and I, I've heard different from fellow counselors, but I would prefer to keep that one. And, and in thinking of staff and where the public is when it comes to holidays, I think everybody would be more in tune to the 8th. So that's just my suggestion.
All right, I'll throw another thing out there. How about we leave all three of them alone? Staff can try to avoid having to have them. If there's a need to have one, then you have all three options available, and you, you can be determinate of what is, you know, pressing enough that we would have to have on one of those nights, and if there's nothing, if the agenda's open, there's nothing to have on those nights, then we can cancel the meeting with a little less notice so that if we need to utilize them, we can, and would council be okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Everybody all right? Anybody with concerns over it? And it helps give you a little direction.
I think Ms. Carson's idea is a good one. We will leave them on the schedule, continue to manage that schedule such that critical items aren't necessary on those meeting nights, but we can revisit it with you in perhaps a month's time, which is still well in advance of December 8th.
Sure. All right, thank you. Now, other administrative council business. Ms. Carson? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I have two. One's on the city manager's report. It deals with the traffic study for Sand Creek Drive, Dyers Street, and I-70, I-270 intersection to look at, it's going to cost $4,500 to do that, and that won't be looked at until, I guess, sometime in 2015. Is that correct?
That's our recommendation. Just to provide a, some additional bit of background, tonight's city manager report, we're reporting back on a request from Mr. Douglas to review what it would take to conduct a traffic study at that intersection, so in the city manager report tonight, we've estimated, we think that traffic study would cost about $4,500 along with some additional coordination with other agencies, and that if council wished to proceed, it would be appropriate to take some action to direct us to do that. Given current workload, our, our preference would be to work it in early in 2015.
What do you desire there, Mr. Douglas?
If I can get council's approval for that.
You want to make a motion?
Like to make a motion. Council's approval for, for a traffic study for Sand Creek Drive, Dahlia Street, and the intersection of I-270.
Can you say the underpass of 270?
I'm sorry, the underpass of 270.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to allow the staff to do a study on the Dahlia Street and Sand Creek Drive and the underpass of 270, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor signify. Oh, you got a comment? Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
Before we vote, is there any way to give us a guesstimate of what the cost of that would be?
$4,500 is what he said.
Forty-five? I'm sorry, I didn't.
That would be the cost of the study. I don't think we have any idea what the cost of improvements might be. That would be something we would explore in that $4,500 study.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
During our budget talks, we were talking about that same intersection to create a, make it a safer intersection under that. This study is going to couple that together also. So while you're doing the study about the traffic flow, it will help with the, to see how pedestrian flow will go to.
We can, we can do that also.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second on the floor. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Your staff direction. Mr. Douglas?
And I had another request too. This, this is not a dollar, dollar request, but it's, deals with the Buffalo Run golf course and the high schools and the use of the, just high school players on the off-season, if they could have unlimited range ball use. And these are for the players who've made the team, not for kids who were, you know, not, that didn't make the team. And then when it comes to tournament time, if they could have a starting time between 9:00 AM and 10:00 AM instead of the afternoon because it kind of pushes things out for them. It's hard to set tournaments up. And I was going to ask if, if that could be a set policy instead of, you know, we could work that in. That way, going forward, both school districts, I mean, both, both, both golf teams from Adams City High School and Prairie View wouldn't have any problems.
I would request that, as opposed to providing that specific direction, give us an opportunity to research both items. The range ball request certainly would have a financial impact and might require council action. And I don't know enough about the golf operation to be comfortable committing to the start time item. I think it might be best if we research both and then report back in a city manager update with some more information that might then require some council action.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other administrative council business? I have a few that I need to bring up. First of all, I want to bring up the developer meeting at Buffalo Run. The concept is that, that the mayor and the city council would hold a developer social at Buffalo Run Golf Course before the end of the year. The intent of the meeting would be to meet and greet with no formal program. City council and the development community would benefit from more informal interactions as new projects are developed in the next several years in Commerce City. The mayor and city manager may make introductory remarks, or it may be scheduled as an open house format for an hour and a half to two hours in November or December of this year. Staff has developed a budget for food, which would be less than $1,000. The city would not be purchasing alcohol, but a cash bar and soft drinks would be available. And finally, this would set, set the stage for future meetings beginning, plan for the Economic Development Division. Staff has planned two events in 2015 that may include a more formal program and guest speakers. And I will be seeking a motion to approve an expenditure up to $1,000 for the event and to direct the staff to set a date before the end of the year for this event. And the way this came about is several developers within our community have been seeking the opportunity to have a venue where they can talk to the city council and myself, and also have staff there to talk about where they're running into problems through development of their properties and/or where things are going smoothly so that we're all aware and have the opportunity to make adjustments to help the development of this community operate on a smoother basis and, and to also let us know where other entities may be holding up progress for development for this community. So I'm open for a motion. Mr. Matheny?
I would gladly move to have staff look to schedule this as aggressively as we can. The mayor and I, I feel like we talked about this every other meeting in terms of concerns that I'm hearing from our developers. And, and I think, just to add a quick comment, we don't control market conditions, but we control the, the way in which or the difficulty with which those who are in a position to need to take advantage of market conditions can react. And so if we've created hurdles intentionally or otherwise, we need to understand what those are so that we can eliminate them. So absolutely move to see that this gets scheduled and begin that constructive dialogue.
All right, I have a rather lengthy motion. Is there a second? Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm going to have a little bit of discussion because I wanted to.
Mr. Mayor, and also could we add to that to approve an expenditure not to exceed $1,000?
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
So moved.
End of the second?
Yes.
All right, a little discussion. I think this is really important because the window of opportunity for development opens and it closes, as we all know. And there are other entities, United Power Public Service, South Adams Water School Districts, that play and affect a role in whether properties are developed or not and, and how costs are adjusted. And what we need to do as a city to help encourage this development, whether it is to reduce our front-end load to the developer or, or to back in some of the fees, but especially on our retail commercial stuff, it's, it's really important. And we have developers right now that are holding large parcels of land for multifamily units and with the construction defect laws that, that we have in the state of Colorado right now, that we're working diligently to remove so that, or, or at least reduce so that we can get multifamily owner occupied housing starts back in our community, especially with the mass transit that, that will be in our community shortly. It's important that we all meet and understand and know who these developers are and that, that they have the access to the city council to give us comments and concerns so that we can make things better for them. And so that's why the request from me to have the council entertain this endeavor. Any other comments before I call the vote? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I do have one more bit of, of information that I want to give everybody. I could have waited until the report section, but I'm going to do it now. Myself and Mr. Hayes met with the county, county commissioner, and with several people of their staff from the department that deals with noxious weeds. And many of you have heard me talk about noxious weeds in the past, sitting up here at the dais, the amount of bull thistle or Russian thistle, whatever they call it, that is overtaking our community as well as other, other noxious weeds that, there are laws by the state of Colorado that prohibit those type of weeds on your property and, and what needs to be done to remove those weeds and the limited resources that we have as a municipality. We, we did talk to the county about what they offer and what kind of resources they have to provide. First and foremost, the county has offered to do a training program for our Parks and Recreation Department as well as our Public Works Department, as well as our Code Enforcement Department, to help them to identify what, what noxious weeds are and what the treatment for those noxious weeds needs to be to remove them from our community so that they don't continue to spread. Part two is that they offer a partnership where they would provide services because of the bulk chemicals that they purchase, we could buy into services as needed to help identify and remove these noxious weeds within our right-of-way. And that's where it really needs to start, is within city-owned properties and city-owned right-of-way before we make any requirements of our residents or push too hard to show that we are managing those type of noxious weeds ourselves before we imply to our residents that they need to be managing them. And third, they also have offered the city to have a member of, of the city, an employee, preferably out of the Public Works Department because that's the department that deals with non-irrigated weed mowing and, and spraying of that nature, to sit on their board for their noxious weed program, which I think would be a huge resource to have an employee that served on the Adams County Noxious Weed Control Board to be able to provide us with the necessary technical advice when it comes to how to deal with weeds and noxious weeds and the, the things that are driving a lot of the residents crazy, that are getting into their yards and blowing in off of our roadsides and things of that nature. So with that said, I know Mr. Gaylor is going to be talking with the county attorney as to how to make this appointment for one of our staff people. And I would leave it up to Mr. McBroom and his staff to determine who that staff person would be that would serve on that board to be able to come back and have the technical expertise to lead us in the right direction when it's concerning noxious weeds, especially on city-owned properties. And that's just an update from a meeting that I pushed for and we did have. And I, I want to thank the county for being very open to working with us and to looking at starting a municipal type of cooperative that would allow us to cross some of our resources to take care of some of these problems that, that we have, that they have the expertise of and that we don't. With that said, I'm going to close the administrative portion of the meeting and we'll go into reports. Mr. Manager?
Guess I'm talking too much tonight. My battery died. That's hard to believe, actually, isn't it?
Yep.
We did distribute city manager's report to you this evening via email. I'll hit the updates that haven't been covered yet. We are very close to the end of the 21-day closure on 104th Avenue. The contractor tells us work on the road, that required the road to be closed will be completed by the end of the day Wednesday. So traffic should be back open on 104th Avenue between Highway 2 and Highway 85 on Thursday. The police department is conducting a neighborhood meeting at Central Elementary School tomorrow evening to meet with neighborhood folks to address concerns about crime in that area. So I appreciate the police department doing that work. I know council members are being contacted about potential names for the new outdoor leader pool. We've included in the city manager report information that we had provided previously about the public naming process that's well underway. So that's information that you can provide to folks who contact you that have an interest in submitting a name to be considered for the new outdoor pool. Mayor Ford covered most of the information in our update tonight on weed management. One additional item, we are planning a study session early next year to talk about weed management in general. We will include updated information on the noxious weed services from Adams County. We are continuing to research sort of the criteria for having somebody appointed to this county advisory board. Once we understand the nature of that board, we will proceed to submit a city staff member to be considered. The ultimate decision, as I understand, would be made by the County Board of Commissioners. We have a brief update on the Quality Community Foundation Board recruitment effort, which is underway. We also included a notice from the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District about rate and fee increases contemplated for 2015. And then we've also included the monthly capital improvement program update, an update from the North Metro Railline, and the current version of the city council work schedule. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have about any of those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaylor?
Yes, I have two items to advise the city council on. I have two sizable closings scheduled for this week. Tomorrow is the closing on the Boys and Girls Clubs tract that the city is conveying to the Boys and Girls Clubs. And then on Friday, October 24th, will be the closing that you approved by the resolution tonight for Victory Crossing. And we'll have those completed then this week.
Thank you, Mr. Gaylor. All right, to start my report off, I wanted to let the council know because it's been a topic that we've heard over and over is permanent water for the Sing Saba Temple. I wanted to graciously thank the South Adams Board of Directors for finding a permanent solution for the water needs at the Sing Saba Indian Temple out on 120th Avenue. So we shouldn't be hearing any more about that. From, from the looks of it, the district was able to take care of and handle all of their needs. So that was one that was kind of hanging out there for a long time. I had a meeting with Mr. Jim Marshall, had the Water Commission meeting. Myself and Rick Teter both went and did the Monaco Elementary Walk to School. Again, that meeting with the county on weeds. Several of us went to the Commerce City Business Professionals Association after-hour Meet the Candidates type forum. Had a, a meeting with the Mexican consulate, which I thought was very intriguing. They have a city in Chihuahua that is about the same size or, or, it, it's a little smaller than Commerce City, but they have surrounding cities. It's, it's more industrialized and they are, they brought a petition with an interest for a sister city component to Commerce City. So there'll be more information coming on, on that issue, but it was just brought to my attention last week. And then I had a meeting with Mr. Mark Locas, not concerning the purchase of the property, but concerning development of the site, which also was good news. And then Rotary, and I had, I allowed a Metro State student, as I mentioned earlier, to interview me concerning city government. And then one of the events that I was unable to make, but I know some of the council members made it to, was the badge and honor ceremony last Friday. And I just want to state that I, I appreciate all of our law enforcement, I appreciate all of our employees, but, but our law enforcement does a special kind of job and, and I really enjoy those badge and honor ceremonies. And I think that it's the opportunity and the time for the chief and the staff to recognize and honor our law enforcement that has went above and beyond the call of duty. I wish I could have been there, but unfortunately, I was unable to make that one. So please send my regards to the police department and let them know that just because I was, was not there, doesn't mean that they don't matter. And thank you to the council members that were able to attend that badge and honor ceremony. I know I didn't hit all of the highlights, and if there's any council member that has anything they'd like to add to my report, now would be the proper time to do so. Mr. Bullock?
I missed a lot of events down here because during the week of the 7th through the 10th, I was in Vail for the housing convention. And you would not believe all the money there's out there available for low-income housing. And we're talking millions of dollars. But what you have to do to get that money and how you qualify basically is like a carrot on a stick. They put this money out there for you and you basically have to have what you're asking for before you can get what you want. So if you need $10 million, you have to have $10 million so they can guarantee that you have it. And 4% money and 9% money, and you wouldn't believe. have it. Uh, and 4% money and 9% money, and you wouldn't believe, um, the education I got on money and, uh, low-income tax credits and all this, uh, it made your head hurt. Uh, also, last week, the Kaleidoscope of Hope had a breakfast for Casa of, um, Adams and Broomfield County that I went to in the morning. Uh, the Metro North had a debate, uh, that same week, uh, as a morning debate for breakfast. Um, it's, um, I used to think that all meetings were at night, but they have figured out a way to use every one of your hours, your waking hours, from 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night usually. And tomorrow I will leave for Golden to go to the Hill and Healthy Living Conference they're having up there for Tuesday and Wednesday, but I will be here for the groundbreaking.
Councilwoman Carson?
Uh, Mayor, I know you touched on the badge and honor ceremony, and I just wanted to add a few things to that. First of all, staff did a great job transforming this room. Um, but to the public out there, uh, it, it's, it's not a public invite. It is very much a private ceremony for our, our officers and their families to thank them for what they do. But when you sit there and you hear the stories and realize that while we all live in this city, and, and I won't say take for granted our safety, but go about our business every day with, um, very grateful that, that we're safe in this city, when you hear the stories of, of what our fine officers are going through, um, it, it, it puts a whole different thought process there. And as I sat there and looked around the tables at the families who these officers belong to, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Um, it, it, it really is an honorable job, and it really is one that everybody is benefiting from way more than, than we even know. So, uh, thank you very much.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I just want to echo that of, um, Councilwoman Carson, that, uh, it was, it was well-attended badge and honor, and I do look at all those families with little kids and everything, and, uh, uh, those officers, men and women, going out, um, every day to do their job, not even thinking about what they're going to, um, once they're on call. And, um, it's, it's something that's, that is needed and, and, and very well supported by our council. So I just wanted to tell, um, all the officers that have put their lives out there every day for us, uh, thank you very much.
All right. If there be no further business to come before this council this evening, we're adjourned. We will take a five-minute break while the city clerk prepares for, uh, the Commerce City Northern Infrastructureal, Infrastructure General Improvement District meeting.
Thought process there. And as I sat there and looked around the tables at the families who these officers belong to, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Um, it, it, it really is an honorable job, and it really is one that everybody is benefiting from way more than, than we even know. So...